We can't have a meeting or open a meeting and declare a meeting. Is that the way you'd like to handle it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. If you'll bear with me, we'll do the pledge and then the invocation. Sean, you lead us in the pledge, please. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Jeremy, can we do the invocation for it?
Great, thank you. If you would, bow your heads with me as I pray. Lord, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings you provide for us. Or thank you for life itself, for a measure of health we need to fulfill the calling you've placed in each of our lives. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor and the responsibilities you give us to lead and to govern. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you. Thank you for loving us in spite of ourselves at times. Your love is boundless and your gracious nature to us knows no limits. In Scripture, you have said that citizens ought to respect the governing authorities since you have established those leaders to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, our city council members, and the various levels of city officials. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and challenging times we face today, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a desire for justice and goodness, confidence in what is right and pleasing to you, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. May you grant them a peace that surpasses all understanding in their lives as they lead and govern our community. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of Lancaster. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yeah. So I was down in Figueroa there. I was up in, uh, there for a while. I worked over at Site 3. There's another project over there. And then I worked over at, uh, I know. He worked at Site 3? Okay, let me tell you what we're gonna do. We'll let everyone talk. If you don't file a speaker card at the end of the meeting, I'll ask if there's anyone else that wants to speak. You can raise your hand. I'll let you come up. It'll begin informal. We'll do it that way. Trelleese, you wanna do a report on, or whoever's doing it? And we will probably have to have a special meeting, so you guys can come back specifically for that if you want, but hopefully we'll have that date certain before you leave. So...
We will need to select that date before the end of the night.
Okay.
And Jeff Hogan will be giving the presentation on this item.
Okay, Jeff.
Are you going to reschedule this so that we can speak in front of people when it counts? Sorry to speak out of order, but you have a full house here. It's shameless that they are two hours...
Okay, now, hang on. Hang on. First of all, it will be orderly. Shouting from the audience, I'm not gonna tolerate. If you listen to me, I said we'll reschedule it. We'll have a date. We'll do that.
How will we know the new date?
I told you, if you were listening, that I'll try to do it before the end of the meeting. They're trying to figure out a date currently.
You can't hear me?
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay.
So the item tonight, I'll just start off, is because of the state. I'll just start off with that. This is something that we are being forced to deal with, resolve, address. We've been having many discussions over the last year at the city council meetings, general discussions about this mandate requiring food waste to be recycled, causing rates to possibly be increased significantly. And most recently in May, where the city council approved a resolution to formally start the process of figuring out what we're gonna do about this. So in fact, the state of California is requiring all cities, counties, jurisdictions to immediately start diverting all food waste away from the landfills. So no exceptions. In order to comply with this far-reaching state regulation, city staffs under the city council's leadership have been working with Waste Management to address this. Across the state, cities are working to implement programs that are gonna require significant increases to their solid waste hauling routes, rates. According to the state's Cal Recycle Department, increases to monthly rates are varying between 17 and 30 percent. The city's negotiated monthly rate to address this mandate and recycle all food waste is below that range at around 12 percent. Thus, the item before the city council is to request to adopt a resolution to increase the monthly solid waste fee for single-family homes and to collect the fees on the LA County property tax roll in order to comply with the state mandate, state mandate for recycling food waste. And that concludes my presentations.
Okay. You'll be back. Okay, I'll call them up just in order that I received them. Judith Schroeder?
So I've never been to one of these before, but...
Come on down and speak at the...
So am I here to just register my, this approval of this? Is that why? Is that what I'm saying? Never been to one of these before.
Most people are here to tell us how dumb we are and to say that they could've done it better. So you can register it. Just tell us what's on your mind.
Well, I'm presently, I'm a single mom with two boys, and they generally take the trash out, but in a few years, I will be a retired person. I won't have a lot of trash already. I'm, they are hauling four trashcans. I don't look forward to another on my own. And so I reject it on that basis. Also, as a, as a single mom, I'm dealing with increased property taxes as it is, and having another increase for something I don't like is not at all, you know, pleasing or acceptable to me. That's, that's my two cents on that.
And you're aware that this isn't the city council's doing? And there's, there's, Jeff didn't talk about the fines that we would receive. It's $10,000 a day if we don't implement something. So we've kicked the can as far down the road as we possibly could. And the state is saying that they will not give us extra time. We wrote letters. We told them we're in the middle of a pandemic, that we want it pushed back, we want it re-looked at. Everything's too expensive now. Everything is. So for those of you that are in the audience and yourself, both Ken and I have sat on the sanitation district, which is on your tax bill, the largest bill that there is. They've had increases scheduled for the last four years. We've held those back. We've told them that you can't do it. So it's possible for the state to do it, but Sean Cannon is the state representative. He volunteered to be here. He's for Senator Wilk's office. So it is not the city council. It is the state's. And if you look at it, it varies between the different cities, how they negotiated it. I negotiated the contract, and we did it at close to $4, where our neighboring city, Palmdale, is close to $7, a little over $7. So they vary different ways that they've, they've done things. So we tried everything possible that we can do, but the state will not allow, and we cannot afford $10,000 a day. So I apologize on behalf of the state, but there's nothing that we can do. We've exhausted everything that we can for that, and we will try to do that. That was one of the reasons why we wanted to put it on the tax roll. If you itemize and deduct it, then it will become deductible. Some people will realize a 27 percent reduction if they itemize it on their taxes because it was, we've tried every, to rearrange everything. It's not good. I don't appreciate it. I have to pay it. We all have to pay it, and, but it's not something that we wanted to do.
Okay.
So, thank you for your concern.
Okay, thanks.
So before anybody else speaks, I just wanna clarify, right before, as everybody was gathering, Sean works for Scott, and he's obviously our representative in Sacramento. And one of the things that I shared with, with Mr. Shannon tonight was that the biggest frustration when you're an elected official, you know, I'm not for sure if everybody voted for me, or you may have and you may not have, but probably today, our biggest frustration of all the council members is trying to fight off the craziness that takes place in Sacramento. And so if you heard the vice mayor tonight, we have run all the way up to the end. So case in point, tonight, you're gonna get another date, and we're right down to the wire. And what will begin to take place is, is we will start being fined daily at the rate of $10,000 a day. And so I know your frustration, and the first thing you do is you reach out to the local government, and you're thinking, well, look at what the fine gentlemen are doing again at, leaders at City Hall. And I want you to understand, if we had a chance, just like we've done with the sanitation district, between Marvin and I, they've wanted to raise those fees for the last probably eight to 10 years, and we've said, because of the way the organization is run, we've staved them off. In this case, it was the state legislature and the governor of the state of California that signed this waste bill into law. And so I tell everybody today, gosh, I sure hope you vote, and I sure hope you vote wisely. And, and I get your frustration, and the biggest thing that I'm really plugged in is there's a lot of senior citizens that have to contend with the nonsense that's been going on for the last two or three years. And I feel for everybody that are on fixed incomes that said, hey, look, it's my time, I'm gonna retire, and then now here's another darn fee I'm gonna get hit with. I, I really feel for you. I really do. And my apologies, you heard the apologies on, and all we can say is, we're, we're sorry for the knuckle brains that are in Sacramento that are making these crazy, crazy rules. And then one last thing, the restaurants are getting clobbered, because some people said, well, what about the restaurants? Trust me, the restaurants are getting clobbered with, with their specific waste bill. So they're not exempt, so it's not just being put on residents. So with that, I'm gonna be quiet. I'll listen to you.
The date that they've come up with, unofficial at this moment, is July 26th.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can we have an announcement from the city clerk? Since we do not have a quorum, we need to continue some public hearings, and she has the authority to do that.
Okay.
When we do not have a quorum present. So she's got a quick announcement to make.
Go ahead.
Due to a lack of quorum, all items that are agendized on today's agenda will be, excuse me, continued to Tuesday, July 26th at 5:00 PM. These items include all consent calendar items, including public hearing items, PH1 and PH2, continued public hearing items, CPH1, new business item, NB1. All of those items, again, are continued to the next, it's actually going to be a special meeting on Tuesday, July 26th at 5:00 PM, here at the city, Lancaster City Hall, city council chambers.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna dismiss the captain, if you'd like to go. You're good to go, if you'd like to. Shannon? You guys can go. I don't think we're gonna need you. You can go.
So at this point, we're going, we're, we're going to continue to hear from the public, but the continued public hearing will be on the 26th.
Correct. James Young?
Appreciate your explanation. We all know how it is. My property taxes have never even thought about going down, so I appreciate your good fight, but I haven't seen it in the numbers. My concern, hey, things go up, things cost money. I think, I don't know, do I throw a salad in a new bin, and a steak bone in another bin? That's irrelevant. I don't want this on my property taxes. Okay? That's the main thing. And I think you guys, you guys do have a say in that. You control how this goes. Yeah, it's up to you to get the money. You have the mandate from the state to make this happen. But putting it on our tax bill is unfair. I don't need another $500 hit on my tax bill and a foot in the door where you can raise it every year as much as you want. And it just goes up and up and up. So get your money for the little salad can, or whatever they're gonna call it, but keep it off our tax bill. At least keep it off of mine, and I thank a few of these other folks around here, and that's all I gotta say.
Let me, let me have a, I appreciate everyone's concern, but let me tell you why it's on the tax bill after the negotiation. 18 percent of the bills that Waste Management has do not, they do not get paid.
That's not me. That's a bad landlord.
Let me, let me...
We've heard these stories. I understa, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I, I'm reclaiming my time. That's bad landlords who rent houses to people who don't pay for trash. We've all been through this before. We all have neighbors like this. Don't punish all of us for a bad feud. You can, you can, you can pinpoint those people...
I can let you talk, or we can argue back and forth.
Well, I only have three minutes. You have all night.
And we can talk back and forth. Let me try to explain something to you, and then you can tell me how stupid I am.
I'm not saying anything like that.
Okay. Now, 18 percent of those are not collected. So what happens to their trash? They throw it in the desert. Now, it's banned landlords, it's absentee landlords, it's all of the above, and I agree with you 100 percent. But there's nothing that we can do about it except for, I'll give you all the time you want. So there's nothing that we can do about it except for making sure that the people have trash, because they're taking it in the desert. Part of our negotiations was to go into, and Waste Management was closing at noon. They had a two, three-hour wait outside their places for, on the weekends. So we negotiated all those different things to make sure that we had access till 4 o'clock. So it was back and forth and back and forth, but to, we have to concern ourselves with the trash that's in the desert. Okay? It's a, it's a major problem right now, and a lot of it comes from the homeless. So, and it's, it, I, I know, but it's, it's, everyone says, it's not me. We have to do something about it.
Wait a second. May I speak?
Sure.
So you're talking about two separate things now, but you merged them into one thing. One thing is a mandate by the state, the salad tax, whatever you wanna call it. And then now you want trash in the desert. You're making those, you're combining those things, and you're punishing us. Hang on. You know who's renting houses in this, in this city. They have to file forms, they have to fill out, they have to get their property approved for rental. You know who these rental properties are. You know, and you know how to find out. You know how to find out, at very least, when the event happens.
We should know, but that doesn't happen. It, it's not, it, it...
Well, maybe you should put some money in that. Why are you taxing the people who are honestly paying their tax bill every day, who put their trash in the right containers? I'm doing this all the time, and then I see people speaking about this nationally, and they're saying, oh, only 10 percent of all trash gets recycled. Well, we're doing our part. We're paying our taxes, we're separating our trash, we're being good citizens, and you're slapping us with a four, which will soon be $500, and up and up and up, tax bill. This is unfair to us. Unfair. We've done nothing wrong. You can get this money from the landlords who violate the rules. And as far as raising the rates, people understand that. People like, you know, it goes up. A little bit more money for a stupid state mandate. I don't know. Tell me the difference between grass clippings and a salad. I don't know, in a landfill. I don't know. You know, you tell me. That, that's some state nonsense, but what you're doing is you're combining these things, and you're trying to equate trash in the desert, which I agree, is a problem. There's no doubt. People are dumping in this, in this desert, but it's not us. We're tax-paying citizens.
I'm not saying...
And we're being punished, and I just think it's unfair, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna stop there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My concern is the same as everybody else, but I want some clarification on something that was done about putting this on, on our taxes. We got this in the mail, and I know of people who said, oh, the city is sending us another form for something, and they threw it out. Nothing on the front said important. Look on the other side, something. I know people that just threw it away. I know a lot of people who didn't even get one. How many single-family homes do we have total in the Antelope Valley? Do you know offhand?
I do. 229,000.
Thank you.
That was wood from the...
How many of them are single-family homes? How many of them are rentals?
That's statistics not available.
Yeah. You have to go after whoever is renting these homes. Don't hang it on us. We are gonna be increased. We're senior citizens. Our bill, my husband calculated, will go up 44 percent. That's absurd. Then I get this little postcard from Waste Management that says my bill is going to go up 3.5 percent. So what is it? This or this? And I don't want it on my tax bill. If I leave this, my home, will I get any of my money back that I paid into Waste Management on my tax bill? No. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Grooms.
Haven't seen you for a while.
It's been a while, yes, sir.
I know.
Good evening.
Larry used to be the editor of the Antelope Valley Press.
I let my press card expire in 1999, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you very much. They say that very few things in life are either unique or unprecedented. This situation that we're facing here in Lancaster altogether is, in my opinion, a unique event not to be missed. As to being unprecedented, no, I think that there is precedent for this. The precedent came about when the King of England, Old George...
We're going back to 70...
Sent, sent word over to the colony that some things had to change, including, oh, putting a tax on such triviality as tea. But they could afford it, right? The colonists? And of course, they had no word to say, they had royal governors who were appointed, who were just looking east at England and nodding yes. The city government was the first institution in our country. It is the only local government that we can have direct appeal to. We elect you to be our first, the line of defense against everybody upstairs who's trying to tell us how to live, and how to breathe, and how to eat, and how to deal with our trash. It's your responsibility as elected members of this council to protect the people out here, the people who elected you, the people you serve, not to bow and scrape to the politicians in, in Sacramento and in Washington, DC, who, let's talk about the, for one second here, this whole thing about the, the driving environmental thing. What is that gas? Oh, it's, it might seep out of the landfills and get up into, into the atmosphere and cause global warming, or a part of global warming. Well, methane gas also is being, I found this out from Waste Management, waiting for the next call. Their, their system told me that they're, they're getting rid of their old diesel trucks, and they're replacing them with new, clean, energy-burning methane gas. Now, we've got a great legal mind who's not here tonight, but it seems to me the city oughta, instead of worrying about paying $10,000 a day fines, take that $10,000 a day and get him to file a constitutional lawsuit and bring in a, a freedom-loving organization to make this a class-action lawsuit. Thank you.
Larry touched on a few things that I'll expound on. It is going to get worse. What has happened, this is a temporary fix, the $4 is a temporary fix. They want us to build a biodigester, correct?
An aerobic digestion.
An aerobic digester. And that will produce the gas, and they will put that gas in the pipelines, and then they will take it. It's being negotiated right now, back and forth, where we will build it, whether it's, we'll build it in Palmdale or Lancaster. We don't have enough to do it with, but that gas is what they're gonna fuel the trucks with, so that they produce from this. So it gets worse.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I did want to have one correction. We sent notices to 39,789 parcels, which is more than was identified previously, and I wanted that correct number to be in front of everyone.
It's actually less than...
39,789 parcels.
But we have a lot more parcel, the single-family homes in the area, according to the internet.
Those are the ones that notices were mailed to.
Ed Dunn?
My residence is the city of Santa Clarita. Not necessarily by choice, my job made me get closer to the LA airport some years ago. So I'm one of those landlords, so I know something about that. The city really exercised us on gonna pay hundreds of dollars for when we had the house empty, and, and that's wrong. And so I did some digging and find out that California's Proposition 218 does not allow payment for anything, any service that's not provided. And that's gonna supersede over some of this other I heard explained earlier, because proposition to, the propositions are by the citizens, and the state Californian government can't modify it. So any service that's not provided cannot be charged for, and we had a battle with them for a while. My city, Santa Clarita, has had a waste management for a long time. My city, Santa Clarita, has had a waste management for a long time. Just three weeks ago, they made an arrangement for Waste Management to go on vacation and they've taken over and gone to Burt Tech. Perhaps you people might hunt, even it might be some other good waste management company. And so some of the things I'm hearing tonight, like the city's mandating that you go on the tax rolls, I hadn't heard that. And our city's not going on the tax rolls. So we must not have the same mandate. So we gotta get all on the same page.
It is not, if I said that, then I misspoke.
Oh, okay, yeah, I did hear that.
That it goes on the tax roll. We're being mandated about the cost and the cost and that we have to do this. And it's different for every city. And the two cities, Palmdale and Lancaster, are pretty much identical. However, one, we negotiated ours at four, theirs is at seven. So there's differences within the contract. Anytime you open up the contract, it's, it, it's not good.
I think people would love, at least governmental people would love to have it on tax rolls because the people would not see it and they wouldn't see the increases. And they'd love that, that the cities or the governmental people would love that because they just keep collecting the money and even the vacancies and you have to fight it on the vacancies. Waste Management down in our area had something called self-haul. If you were in, you didn't want the weekly service, you had a truck and you want to take it to the dump, you could sign up for, well, wait, a self-haul. But this city told us they don't have self-haul and it was the same company, the same company out of Texas. So there's some of that that's going on, that is a lack of cooperation. And I wasn't blaming the city government exactly, as I was the people I was dealing with in the city government that was being so harsh with us. Now, I don't know if they're Waste Management employees or not, but I felt they were city employees and I didn't appreciate that. So I'm, we're against putting it on the tax rolls because there's enough things on the tax rolls anyway. And you don't have to reinvent the way of collecting it. Just look at the utilities. When you sign them up, you take a deposit. When they finally leave, they go back, they get their deposit back and you bill them once a month. It's as simple as that. And so there's not really a problem with it. But they were, couldn't charge us hundreds of dollars because when we canceled out the leasing of our home, former home here, two years ago, we canceled out the person's leasing and said, we're going to take our time, do it yourself and prepare it for sale. And we've been doing that. But they were going to charge us hundreds of dollars because we owed for all this and we had no containers. They called them totes evidently, or toters. And we had no containers, they were picking up no salvage and they're charging us and insisting. And then when I found out about the Proposition 218, then I had a little bit of relief. And that is a proposition. So these other things that some of the city and county governments may like to do, they cannot do it unless it complies with that particular proposition. So I thank you for hearing us and giving us a chance to talk to you about it.
Thank you.
But we just don't, we're opposed to going on tax rolls.
Kathy Reagan?
Hi. Yes, I'm here to protest the putting our Waste Management bill into our taxes. Now, I know you're all represented here as the city. Apparently you're not collecting this money, it'll be the taxes. So why isn't there a representative from the state here? Right, which one?
Sean.
Right there?
Yes. I'm not here representing the senator.
You're not here representing the state?
No ma'am.
Okay, so why isn't there somebody representing the state here from the state government? If they're mandating this, is this a court hearing or what?
No, but it should be.
It's a what?
And we should have some state officials here, including the governor, so we could give them an earful.
Yes, yes. Or something, otherwise what we're saying doesn't make a difference.
Let me clarify real quick. Sean is Senator Wilk's aide. He is also a deputy mayor, which allows him to sit up here. So he was made a deputy mayor and so what he is saying is, right now, he is not representing the state. So he is a representative. He is Scott Wilk's representative.
But you're not representing the state.
I hear you. I'm hearing all of your concerns, but tonight I am not representing the senator.
Okay. So what does our, what does our voices do?
No, we'll take them into consideration. I know that they mean, if they meant nothing, I could have blown you all off and said, we'll see you in July 26th.
Right.
Okay, if they meant nothing. Okay, it's important, I know, to Ken and myself to hear everybody on what your concerns are, why your concerns. And a lot of things, a lot of times, you'll educate us. So we're writing down what your concerns are and we're, you know, take it back and we'll look at to see if there's anything that we can do.
Okay. And also, is there somebody here from Waste Management?
The representative for Waste Management has COVID. They were expected to be here.
But they're not.
But they're not.
We do have two representatives here tonight.
I'm sorry. Okay, hey, come up here. Come on.
They may have some more, well, I was going to say wisdom, but you're probably not going to hear it as wisdom, so. But they may have some more facts. Might not make you feel any better.
And if you want to talk, push this button on the right.
So, okay, so then say our bill, we pay our bill, it's on our taxes. What guarantees that they're not going to be dumping in the desert? And who's going to pick that up?
Nothing, but it's, we have a problem. We're trying to solve, like I think Mr. Young said, we're trying to solve a lot of our different problems. Because when we open the contract up, we have to solve a lot of different problems. Because the city has a lot of problems.
Yes, they do. And I agree. But I've lived here since 1960. There have been dumps in the desert since then and before. They have never been picked up. The things that get picked up are maybe what we see from the road, maybe. There's dumps out there that are never picked up and who's responsible for that?
We are.
Who?
The city.
The city. And why aren't they picked up now?
We're having different processes that we're going through. We funded a four-man crew two years ago that it got to be that level, that that's all they do is they go out and then they take the dumps. And so we funded different ways to do it, different people to do it. So we actually have two, two-man crews that go out and do it every day. We have a couple of different programs that we're going to have that's going to be involved with the community cleanup. So we're trying.
I understand. I'm just saying, I don't believe that having a bill increase is going to do anything with the dumps in the desert. Because it hasn't in the past. They have not been cleaned up. And also, I've talked to several people here and they're saying, like you said, with this new development of some kind of methane gas pipe or something, who gets the benefit from that?
Well.
And why is our bill going up?
Waste Management is under the scrutiny of the ABA-QMD to limit the production of diesel emissions. So we mandated them to go to the Clean Air, which they have done. They've built a facility. They've changed the facility. So this is done at all their cost and this is part of doing business. Is to clean the air up, to clean everything, to do that. So I hope that answered some of your questions.
And I hope so too. I mean, I don't like to see trash in the desert, but, so that's what the food waste is going to go for?
Correct.
Okay, so we're helping them to have a subsidiary business?
Well, we have a yearly rate. It is being mandated by the state of California that they do it. None of this was done by Waste Management. Okay? Me and Waste Management go way back. We've butt heads many, many times for many, many years. However, this is not their doing. This has to do with the state. This has to do with, except for putting it on the tax bill, which is the city.
And I know Waste Management is a business. It's a conglomerate. They've purchased and put out of business every trash company that I know of in Southern California. So they have a, you know, monopoly, monopoly over the whole thing. So I can't see that they're losing money. So what's the increase for?
The increase is because they have to take it and they have to haul it. Currently, they're hauling the food waste to Bakersfield. So it's a cost per ton. What we're going to produce will be hauled to Bakersfield where they have an aerobic digester there and it will be done there. So at current rates with everything on a per-ton basis, that's what the new cost is. So you can imagine putting more trash in and they have to haul that trash. It's not new trash, so let me take that back. It's they're putting separate trash in that they have to haul to Bakersfield now. They no longer can put it into the landfill. Correct?
Right. So historically, so when somebody says, where did this additional expense come from? Historically, the state of California allowed all waste haulers to take either green waste or in this case, food waste now, because they've added, here's another layer. You know, they started off with green waste first, you can't put it in the landfill anymore. And so now they've mandated a new layer and now they've said, you can't put the food waste in the landfill anymore. So when you say, what's the additional cost for, is when they go to pick it up, they can't put it in the landfill anymore. It's got to be separated out. And we've got a, or they now are mandated by the state of California to deal with that end product. And so that's for the new additional cost. If we had it our way, I'd put it back in the landfill.
That's where it needs to go, so it can break down.
But again, I have a strong opinion, because again, people don't understand, we got state of California and we've got a particular group of people that control that legislature. And with their wisdom, they have decided no food waste in any landfill in the state of California. So everybody's going to pay for it.
So let me give you an example of their wisdom for it. Everyone here that they've been here for a while remembers Wild Phil Arclan. Okay, he had Wild Phil mulch, okay? You couldn't put green waste inside, but at that time, you could put it on the outside layer to hold the dust down. So you couldn't put it inside, but you could put it outside as a mulch. So that's why they went to the mulch. This is similar, but it's a different, it's a different process. They're looking to eliminate, the state of California is looking to eliminate all trash, period.
Well, good luck. You know, I know that Waste Management is like part of the, what is it, the Chicago Climate Exchange and that? And they get benefits for their carbon, carbon. And when they have low carbon, their certificates, they can then sell to other countries. And so we're helping them get rid of the carbon. They sell their certificate, they get money from that. So we're the losers here. The taxpayer is the loser. There is no benefit for us. We're not getting any benefit from this. I recycle all of my food waste. I garden. You know, I haven't put that in the trash for a couple of years. And I just see that they're mandating a whole group of people to be responsible for those who dump in the desert or those who don't pay or whatever. And I know that the Franchise Tax Board, they now, they oversee car registrations. And if you get a ticket, you don't pay it, they can attach your wages, your bank account, anything that you have. And so if we can't pay our mortgage payment because of these tax increases, which we will be paying every month, what is the benefit of all this for anybody except for them? That's exactly right. Because they can take your car eventually.
Let her talk.
Yeah. But anyway.
Okay. She asked a lot of questions worth the benefit. I can't, I don't know who's, it's obviously not you. It's obviously not me. It's obviously not, but who does it benefit? I could say it benefits Waste Management, but I don't think that it does. This is something that the state invented and the state invented it and they taxed you on it and, you know, like I began with, everybody here is, in the city is tired of, you know, $4, $4, $4, $4. It's just, it's not right.
All the time.
We need to move on.
Yeah, anyway, but thank you for hearing me.
Betty McLaurin?
My first thing I want to say is I think the mayor and the two councilmen who did not come tonight owe an apology to everybody in this, in this room. That having been said, I think it's been covered pretty well. I've been here for, you won't believe, since 1947. And I've seen lots of changes.
I've been here since 55, I think he's 56, so.
So I've seen a lot of changes, but also I don't, I can't understand the motivation of the state. But I would say that if we disagree so much with the state, we should vote out the administration that is in now and get somebody.
You and I agree, for sure.
I don't know any, I don't understand how, if our payments go to our taxes and we only pay our taxes one or two times a year, how does Waste Management get their payment?
They, they. No, they put the money up front and they have to wait for it. And then I think it's a six-month lag and then they get it after the first six months and then it'll, it'll flow.
Flow what, monthly to them or what?
No, they get paid on a quarterly basis.
What, once a month?
Quarterly.
How many business people can do, go without getting a payday for four months, three or four months? That doesn't make sense either. But I'm with everyone else. I think it's ridiculous to put this. I think it's ridiculous to put this on our tax bill and I am on a very limited income and I would rather pay it the way I pay it now than a big chunk come twice a year that I have to try and get the money to pay. I just can't imagine the mayor and these people not coming and accommodating these people. But, thank you. I, I am certainly against having it on my tax bill, but I have no feeling that it will help at all. I mean, our talking, I think it's just a lot of hot air that you, won't be, won't do any good at all for our problem.
Thank you, Betty. Is it Louise Padilla?
Thanks all for coming in. My name is Louise Padilla and this will be my first time to speak on this kind of council thing. Okay. I got this letter card from, in the mailer from the city, you know, and like most people, like they said, it didn't look so important, so I just stapled it with the rest of my apps. And then, when I have a whole bunch of them, I said before I throw my trash, "Let me see what's important. Notice of public hearing." Well, I'm not in any lawsuit, maybe that doesn't, you know, affect me. Then it says, "Proposed solid waste collection fee increase," you know? And then it says, "To have solid waste collection fee collected on the tax roll." My, my eyes opened wide. Tax roll? How, how can a waste management go on a tax roll? And I go, "How come I didn't know about this?" You know? So, I, and did my, my, my letter, because it says, "You have to protest in writing." Writing? Writing to who? City? Oh, my God. You know, writing to the city, okay. You know, I was looking at all these things, you know, and the thing is that, when I, when I'm done with my letter, I saw my neighbor, I said, "Did you, did you see this thing? And how come I didn't, you didn't tell me about my taxes going to be implicated?" You know, I walk my street. Only I am the one who received this thing, you know? And then, like you're saying, the lady there, three thou, what? Thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine parcels were, to have sent to. On my streets, several houses, I'm the only one who got it. So, I got curious. I walk another street, only one person got it. I walk another street, only one person got it. I said, "Something's going, what's going on here? Are you trying to slide these 450 on somebody's tax rolls?" And sir, I have a question for you, because I was listening, but I, you know, I can't listen to all these things intently. I was making notes.
Louise, 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 talk to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. He said that the increase only goes up to 30%. When I saw this 450, I said, "Well, my recollection is that I'm not paying 450." So, I went to my, you know, to my little receipts, my waste management bill, and then I computed it and it came to 44%. So, if, and then, to top, to top that, I got this little thing from the waste management people. I mean, after like three weeks of this thing going on, this waste management people sent this little card. They will only raise it to three and a half. What, who gets the 40.5%? Those are questions that I don't, you know, it's just like, what is going on? And why is it that they're saying they sent to 39-something thousand parcels and everybody, you know, in my, on my neighborhood, only every street, they can say they sent it per street, but only one person got it, you know? And the people in my street were tight and something like this, we talk about it, you know, that sort of thing. But, you know, like, again, you know, is it, did this city send this out? And then, to calm us down, did waste management send this for the 3.5? You know, so that, so that if, if everybody votes no, the city, the waste management would say, "We didn't do that because we only said 3.5. It's the city's doing," or something like that, you know? But that is appalling. I went to, to be honest with you, I went to the post office. I was getting people to understand this thing. None of them received this card. I talked to about 200 people, nobody. So, tell me about it. How did people miss this?
Louise.
Anyway, there are so many eloquent speakers here and I'm learning a lot, you know? So, I will give my time to the next one.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you mind if I answer the question about the two mailers that went out?
Sure. You're going to talk about the two different fees?
Yes.
Sure.
The, the, the first mailer that waste management mailed out, which was a three-and-a-half percent increase, that's the annual cost of living increase that's currently in our franchise agreement. The second mailer that was received was to address the SB 1383, the state mandated organics recycling that's required. So, they're two different fees.
This gentleman here just said the right things. I mean, that's exactly what happened. I know a lot of people are upset about everything, but there is some hope in here. The lady that just spoke, the three-and-a-half percent is not like, they're trying to tell you that it's three-and-a-half percent. That is exactly like this gentleman explained here. That's the, the annual increase that always happens. The rest of that has to do with the organic waste collection. And the number 44 keeps coming up. That's interesting. I did the calculation too and that's what I got, exactly. So, I've heard three cases so far. But I want to say also to these people that I went a step further. I talked to the city clerk about this. I said, "I got 44% here" and, and, I'm not talking, but communicating through email with Travis Lang and he explained it out that if I was getting the discount, senior discount, which I am, then my calculation will show 44%. So, and we all complain about waste management. They're very, they've got a very good senior discount. If you haven't gotten it, get it. It's 25%. So, that takes a lot of that 44% away. So, I hope that helps people here. Give them a little bit of solace there. The other things that I wanted to talk about, a couple items. Basically, I'm here because I don't have any information. The supersized postcard that she was waving around just now, it talks about $450 and the tax roll and all that, but I have seen nothing so far of any specifics, any details, how these things were arrived at. So, rather than go into all that stuff, I'm just going to make a suggestion to the city that maybe you guys can put all this together, all these details, like you talked about Ken, you talked about Marvin. I just learned something tonight from that. But I'm kind of wondering, why wasn't I made aware of that at the beginning? Because we're all in this, like a big decision to be made here and to make decisions, you need information. So, I'm asking the city to try to get out as much information as possible, including a little thing about the senior discount. I know it's not a city function, but I'm sure that would certainly help a lot of people in their trash bills. That's it.
Can I take some of your time?
Sure.
How many people get the senior discount now? Okay.
We haven't mentioned ever.
We have to call them up. We have to go to their site. You have to go to their site.
Okay. How many people are eligible for the senior discount?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I would say, I just heard some questions about how do you get the discount? Call them. Just call the waste management.
You have to go out to their center in Palmdale.
No. Call them. Oh, you do?
Hang on this. Why don't we let the young lady?
Well, I didn't know that.
We'll have waste management address it.
Yeah, let's let waste management.
Yeah, there's, there's different ways. We do put it in the bill inserts. It's on our website. We do have a dedicated website for Lancaster residents that you can download the application. If you can't, we're more than willing to mail it to you. We will work with you guys to make sure you get that and that's still going to be offered through this process.
How about if we keep these young ladies hostage at the end and then if you haven't signed up for it, they can collect the names?
Is there a local telephone number for seniors who are not on the internet?
Yes, there's a customer service number that you could reach as well and we'll be happy to send that to you. There's multiple ways to access this form. Yes.
Fred, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you sharing that too.
Roberta McCullough.
I'm Roberta McCullough and I'm speaking in opposition of the fee increase and the tax roll. These increased fees are required in order for the cities to comply with the 2016 resolution by the idiots leading the state of California. This resolution, resolution is unreasonable, unrealistic and impossible. The cost and the money and the effort to the citizens of California are not justified. Instead of trying to comply with this resolution and passing the cost on to the citizens, all the cities in California should work together to get rid of the resolution. Everyone is against adding the fees to the tax rolls. The proposed increase in waste handling fees almost doubles the monthly IFA, 44%. Adding it to the tax rolls guarantees an annual increase in the cost. Because my taxes are paid by my mortgage holder through my impound account, my monthly mortgage payment will be higher. If more of the mortgage money goes to the impound account, less goes to the principal. So, that means I'll be paying more interest, actually paying mortgage interest on the waste handling fee, which makes the fee even higher than the stated amount. The resolution requires the separated waste to be handled by the specific specialized facilities, the anorectic digester. Too bad we can't put those politicians in it. Has the additional water and electricity those facilities will require been considered? We already are being asked to let our lawns die and to take shorter showers and to use our appliances in other than peak hours because we already don't have enough water and electricity. So, we're supposed to water our yards. We're not supposed to water our yards or ourselves, but we're supposed to wash our garbage? So, I'm asking that the city not pass this resolution to raise fees and add them to the tax rolls. Instead, work with all the Californians to get rid of the unreasonable, unrealistic and impossible state resolution. If this can't be done, then the state should pay for it with the money they have already collected.
Absolutely.
And I, and I highly recommend that nobody ever again vote for an incumbent.
You know, I like her.
Richard Lyons.
Hi, I'd like to second everything she just got done saying. I've figured it out so far that we're going to raise our rates by 26 dol, by $11.44 a month. That's going to go to waste management, a private business that we're going to collect off of, it's county taxes for property taxes, not state taxes. It's a county tax.
Now, I'm confused. So, it's not $11?
It's raised my rate that I pay a month by $11. I pay 26.11 a month. They're raising it up to 37.55, which is $11.44 a month more, which is 44% of what I pay.
Right.
And I have the senior discount.
Okay. So, why is that calculated different?
I'll have to look, but the, the one on the postcard isn't going to encompass the senior, so we'll have to go in and apply that because what they put on the postcard is what's standard, standard service.
So, to clarify for the gentleman, then, they'll get a discount on that rate then? Is that what you're saying?
The 20, 20%, yes.
Okay.
And I think this is one of the dumbest ideas I've ever seen, putting it on the property tax. If I move out of state, which most people are, am I going to get my property tax money back? No. If I have a renter and they change from one house to a different house that I don't own, am I going to get my trash allotment back from the property tax I have to pay? Or, am I going to have a way of getting my property tax that I pay for trash now back from my renter? No.
Good questions.
And I also like to know.
Hang on, Richard. Let's get those, you want to answer those questions? Are they going to be able to get their money back?
The city will be issuing a rebate back on, for the senior, for the senior.
Wait a minute. Waste management is a private company. Why is a city giving us money back? That doesn't sound very kosher. Private company. I also understand that we're going to pay extra for this service and we're putting it into our green waste. Do they have a bunch of little minions that are going to separate the food from the green waste? Is that what we're paying for? Because if I understand this right, until they get that fancy machine, they're going to dump the green waste on the ground like they're doing now and letting it dry up.
Go ahead.
Um, no, it's actually, what's happening right now is all the green waste and now with the food waste, like he had mentioned earlier, it's going to all go to one location here locally in Palmdale and get transferred up north to Bakersfield. So, all of it goes there, the food waste, the green waste, that's all having to be transported up there now.
So, we're paying.
It's being turned, where we take it, yes, they're using it and they're turning it back into compost. That's what the current process is.
I'd like to get this straight. We're paying extra for them to pick up the trash. We're paying extra for them to get the benefit from the methan, methane that they're going to use in their trucks so they don't have to buy diesel gas anymore.
Well, they're getting carbon credits.
They're getting carbon credits, so they lower their.
But, we're, we're not paying and it's a fund that is funded and it's, it is used, other businesses are buying those credits.
And also, with them not being, having to collect money every quarter, they can get rid of a lot of their accounting firm. So, we're, we're getting screwed. And by the way, my property tax bill from last year was $1,300 and you're raising it Did you ever think of that? And Proposition 218 says you cannot put anything on the tax bill that's not voted for by the population. Not, and I have Proposition 218 here if you'd like to see it and section.
I've read it numerous times.
You didn't read it good. Section 5 says, Section 5 says, "Proposition 218 prohibits local governments from imposing fees on property owners for services that are available to the public at large," as in garbage collection. If you would like, I'll let you read mine because obviously you didn't read it.
Well, it's, it's a negative vote.
No, it's not a negative vote.
Okay.
You put it before us as a vote whether we want this to be put on our tax bill or not. It's, we vote whether we want it, not, "Oh, we didn't get enough votes for, they don't want it, so we're going to put it on your bill because there's only what, 70 people?"
Allison, you want to explain it?
It is a majority protest procedure under Proposition 218.
Where does that say that in 218? I've read it many times and it doesn't. It says you put it before the voters for a vote. To me, that says you put it on a ballot and we vote yes or no. And if, if we have 229,000 dwellings in Lancaster and you sent out 39,000 stupid cards.
Well, okay, there's not 229 dwellings in Lancaster.
It says on the internet.
Okay. There's a lot of internet doctors, I don't want working on me, but if there's not. on me, but if there's not, there's, I think there's, my calculations has always been close to forty-five thousand in Lancaster.
We got forty-five thousand dwellings for a hundred-and-sixty thousand people? That's our population?
No, those are single-family residents. Now, there's commercial residents, there's other residents, multifamilies, so there's other people that are out there, so...
Well, shouldn't this card have gone out to everybody? Because if their landlords are gonna...
Yeah, I think it went out to everyone that it affects. Allison, where can they get a copy?
From the clerk's office, or if they come and see me after the meeting, I will get their information and have it either sent to you or arranged for you to come and get it. I didn't see who asked the question, or I would look you in the eye. There you are. Yes, so if you come up to me after the meeting, I will make sure that it gets to you.
Okay, Richard, we need to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Paul.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilman Mann, good evening. I come here tonight to try and put a human face on this. To all my friends in the audience who are concerned, I understand completely, and I'm gonna talk about how it impacts me. But even in political opposition to our vice mayor and our councilman man, I know these guys as the most selfless public servants I have ever seen. So I want you all to know in the audience that they are working their best to fix this and they are as outraged as we are. Now, the difference between them and some of us is that they're not on fixed incomes, and recently I had, as a senior citizen, income taken from me, and this is an imperative that will cause great harm to my family and my ability to maintain my home and pay my taxes. So let's make no mistake about it, this, these are dire stakes to many of the senior people in this room on fixed incomes. They are in line to lose their homes if they don't pay these taxes. So, you know, waste management has always been a concern to me. They are the legal owners of all the plastic and aluminum in their trash cans, and yet people go up and down my street on garbage day, taking all this stuff out to go buy drugs and live in the desert and put more pollution in the desert. So if we're gonna have a class action lawsuit, let's also include the fact that waste management, by not taking this money that is theirs in the trash, is funding our problems. And make that a point that they'll have to concede to as well, to stop allowing that money to go away that they could put into this other stuff. So it's absolutely crazy. We do our best. I just, there's no easy solution, but the class action lawsuit sounds like a way to go to me, and I hope you guys understand and get the full council here and have a full meeting and see what we can do, because we're supposed to be concerned about our local residents becoming homeless. This could put many local residents who have lived here and paid their taxes for years into a homeless situation, and that is completely unfair. So thank you for all you do. I know you do what you can. Let's just do more. Thank you.
Fred Flores.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. When I got word of the tax increases for the waste, solid waste pickup, I was really confused because I'm like a lot of other people. I never got a notice from the city, and I talked to a lot of other people, they never got a notice from the city either. And what made it confusing was that I suddenly say, well, wait a minute, waste management bills me for trash pickup, and if I don't pay waste management for trash pickup, they don't, they don't do the service. And I think that's a problem, creates a problem where, why people end up dumping their trash in the desert. And you just said that the city has like two, two-man crews to pick up after the illegal waste in the desert, and that's laughable, because, I mean, the desert's vast, and there's no way in the world you can get like four people to pick up all the illegal dumps. That's totally nuts. Also, if we want, if we're that concerned with the mandate that the state puts on us, shouldn't that be put on the shoulders of waste management, not the city? And the way this whole deal came out about, like the lady said earlier, I forget her name, she was the one that was standing in front of the post office on Twente Street West, that's how I found out about this. And it seems like to me you were just trying to make it where as few people were aware of this vote as possible, so that when you could come in here and say, well, there's not enough people to protest, well, we're just gonna go ahead and pass it, and all of a sudden you get a big fat tax bill.
Is that a question?
No, that's not a question. That's a statement. And then the waste management says here, well, you go online and find out about this senior discount, well, why don't they put that on their cards when they bill us? Because not everybody, I mean, I got access, I got access to their website, I got an account with waste management, but how many people sit there and said, well, I wanna go look at waste management, you know, and see if I get any good deals from them? No, this whole thing is a money grab. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, is it?
Sotzer.
Sotzer.
Yeah. Good evening. I've got three exhibits to hand out to you guys. My name is Patrick Sotzer, 43300 Vista Sierra Drive, fifty-year resident of Lancaster. I'm the retired director of Northrop Grumman Corporation, advanced director from new technology development, and yes, my satellite that I designed is in orbit now, the web. And it works. Anyway, I have a PhD in atmospheric physics and I know methane gas and freeons very well. I'm gonna just talk about State Bill 1383. It requires a seventy-five percent reduction in organic waste to get a forty percent reduction in methane gas, okay? A comprehensive study, this is Exhibit B, was conducted by the National Resources Defense Council in 2017 that estimated that quantities and types of food waste in Nashville, Denver, and New York City, those are big cities. Results showed that about seventy percent of the food waste comes from restaurants, cafeterias, and large places that have large food distribution. Thirty percent from single-family dwellings. That's over a ton of waste, food waste, from one restaurant, a single average restaurant, and only five pounds a week from an average single-family home. Now Lancaster's different, but this is a big study. This is Exhibit A, and I'll leave it here for you guys to study. The waste collection fee increase should be allocated based on the amount of generated food waste, with single-family dwellings paying the least or no increase. Since restaurants, grocery stores, food banks, schools, and prisons generate the most organic food waste, they should pay, be charged the most for this increase. Moreover, waste management should not be required to collect organic waste weekly from single-family dwellings, but only from restaurants, grocery stores, schools, prisons, and other events where they're generating lots of food waste. Okay? Collecting and separating food waste from these large generators will allow the city of Lancaster to meet the State Bill 1383, which says, you know, seventy-five percent reduction by 2025. Just go after those guys. You don't have to do the residents. Residential collection should be a monthly special collection or offer the option to take their food waste directly to the collection center. Is that the end?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Waste management is a very large corporation, net worth about sixty-four billion dollars. They operate numerous landfills across the United States, over a thousand. They have developed, tested, effective gas collection systems that capture over ninety percent of methane gas, and they make that into biogas. They clean it, they include biocovers, bio tarps, and others. Those proven technologies already should be used in Lancaster for the landfill. Okay, I got a few more things. There's no justification for the, to have the increased waste collection added to the annual property tax bill. Direct assessments for the annual secure property tax include city operations, LA Fire County sewer county assessments. Adding the increased cost of a large for-profit corporation, sixty-three billion dollars, should not be put on our tax bill. This should be brought to a vote by the taxpayers. There's nothing wrong with the current system. Leave it the way it is. Thank you. And I have three exhibits.
Will you give them to the city attorney?
This one here is the one you shouldn't be...
Thank you.
And the telescope's working good.
It's Frank Riero. Welcome, Frank.
First time here. And most of the stuff that I wanna talk about has been talked to. However, what surprised me most of all was that for the first five minutes that you two gentlemen spoke, you were putting the blame on the state, on the governor, and all that kind of thing. So if you can't fight them, maybe we need two other people in those seats. Because we need somebody that's gonna fight for us and not somebody that tells us we can't. It's time you guys stood up for us and fight them. If we have to do a legal fight, if Roe versus Wade can be overturned, then nothing's obsolete.
Well, I can tell you...
And you, excuse me, I'm not done. And you said it was a mandate, then you backtracked on it. And I've been noticing just now, you're not aware of the laws, you're not aware of what these weight management can do or will do. And I agree with the gentleman that just spoke recently, that you didn't expect this crowd. You weren't expecting this crowd. And the lady that spoke at before that, I checked my neighbors too, and most of them didn't get the card, either one of them. Or maybe it didn't look very important, so they just dumped it, like most of us do, if it doesn't look important. But I check my mail regularly. I check what's coming in. So if you can't, we need to find somebody that can. It's a monopoly. It's a business that wants you to collect the money for them. It's a business. A tax is something that we use for roads, schools, and whatever. A service is something that provides money to a business. And if I sound angry, I am angry. Because my tax is going up, and that's BS. Thank you.
Billy Wilkins.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I have only one question. I'll direct it to you two. Is waste management a for-profit, privately-owned corporation? It's easy. I'd like to hear it.
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Billy, you can't do that.
Welcome, we the people. I don't have anything else to say to you.
Okay, that's okay.
And starts flashing big money and influence around, making campaign contributions. Anyone like to disclose those?
Absolutely.
To elected office holders and such.
I received nothing from waste management.
They'll, well, I can almost believe that you wouldn't. And if I can interject here, I have more honor for you than anybody.
Thank you.
You were the only one that voted when the city of Lancaster rescinded being a rule-of-law city. It was four or five to one, and you were the only one that stood up for what was right. I remember that. That's the last time I was here. They'll promise to service the needs of the city and invariably expect the city to drive out any competition. That, my friends, is exactly where we are with this waste management mess. And they would love nothing more than to have the city act as their collection agent. While it may possibly be legal for the city to require that we have trash service, just as it is with car insurance, it would never pass the muster of the appellate courts to single out a particular company to provide that service. The Constitution makes it clear that a municipality can not require its citizens to purchase a product or service from a privately-owned company. The Takings Clause of the Fifth Amendment clearly addresses this issue, as well as the Equal Protection Clause, clause is, of the Fourteenth Amendment. Our supposed legal mind, that must be in Laguna Nigell, I have to skip this, sitting up there on his panel, knows full well that what the city is attempting is very much illegal. It's illegal, absolutely blatantly against the Constitution. You cannot force us to support them. Is that clear? The city of Santa Clarita, as it's already been mentioned, and I didn't know it was only three weeks, just recently wised up to this crap and opened up to other waste collection services the opportunity to bring in competition. Within weeks, rates begin to fall, even with waste management. They have competition now. Okay, I'm gonna get this. Only one more. This is the definition of the American way. What has happened in most governing bodies is the fact that they have forgotten their purpose. They are representatives, that's in quotes, that's what you guys are. We elected you. And it's been made mention that these guys two here work hard to help us, and that's the reason they're the only ones here. It's because the others don't. Who are supposed to be implementing what we the people want. It's been made mention about, give it to us. We'll choose. It's not your choice. They are not up there to cram down our throats their harebrained ideas and thinking. So we are here to say absolutely no. To this illegal, unethical sham of a scheme and idea. My wife has forums that have been personally viewed and approved by the city clerk to make our choices, specifically stated in the fine print on the notice that you can hardly read. From the city says that the decision will be made by the outcome of our choices. It's on there. Also, these written choices must be submitted by the close of this session. But now, see, they've moved the date. Now, do we get our written notices in by that date or tonight?
At that date.
Okay, that gives us more time.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And it better, I want to sit on the panel that counts them. Where do I sign up? Because I'm gonna be there.
Sir, you can observe, but you cannot sit on the panels.
I can observe, but I want to be close enough to make sure they're counting.
Absolutely, of course.
Okay, if you don't want to sign up, and I'll be there. Yes.
Thank you.
But you two, you two do have commendation. They are the only ones that really care, but they're not the majority. It's just like what's happening in Congress. None of them guys, does anyone remember Pelosi standing in front of the cameras, giving accolades to her, her comrades, her fellow Democrats, for withstanding the onslaught of people that didn't want the Obamacare? And claimed that they did what was right. Yeah, they did what was right. They're not representatives. Mike Garcia represents us fairly well.
Thank you.
So does Scott Wilt. And so does Tom Lackey. And if the man from Victorville, if all he's got to do is to cop crap on Tom Lackey, we better wake up and not get that buffoon in our office.
Thank you.
Because he don't care anything about us here.
Tammy Slater.
Hi. Hi, my name's Tammy Slater. I've owned a home since 2004, and I don't believe that this should be on, we should be paying for this, unless the politicians are collecting our garbage. Then I'll pay for it, with no problems. But when you come to a private entity, if you collect the money from us, who holds them accountable for collecting our garbage anymore? And then, a lot of this is crime-related. If you guys take the time to make the budgets to fund the police officers, you guys got cameras on every street. You can see who's dumping what and when and where. So I don't understand why this is even coming to our door. I never got the paper. So if there's 45,000 residents, family residents, not including apartment buildings and everything else, and you guys only sent out 39,000, that's ridiculous. I didn't know about it until a family member told me about it. So I vote no. So I say up the, up the funds for the police and let them catch these people and make these people pay for all of these excess stuff that needs to get done. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Tammy. Joe Wilkins.
Hi, I'm Joe Wilkins, and I'm here to oppose what you're trying to do with the Waste Management. I don't agree with the increase in the funds, nor putting it on the tax bill. I have a commercial property, and I've had access to a commercial bin from Waste Management since 2006. Why should I have it at my home when I have it at my commercial property? But I do because I don't want the city coming to my house saying, "You are mandated to have this, you have no choice." And that's happened, not to me, but to another person I know, who owns another home in a different county. They was told by the city council here, or whoever's doing their, out there on the streets, "You have no choice, you have to have Waste Management." And I'm, like these other people that have made mention, they are a monopoly. They do gain money. We need a choice. I never wanted to use Waste Management. I come from a different county too, who does give an opportunity, you can have this, 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 and they have like four different trash companies. We need that too. And they will drop their prices, but right now, they're going up. I'm senior. My question right now is, what is the senior age to get the discount? I didn't even know about it.
Yes, it's 62.
62, then I need a refund for three years. So, yes, seriously, yes. Another thing is, I'm senior. I put in one half, 10-gallon bag of trash every week, one. So your guys are picking up a big thing with one little half a trash bag. Then you send out notices, "Don't wrap your trash in a plastic bag." I'm not gonna put my trash in my cans in my home without a plastic bag, and you say, "Don't put it in the plastic bag." Sorry, it's going in the trash, in the plastic bag. Another thing, eliminating trash, how are we gonna do that? What's the state think they're doing? You're gonna have paper, clothes, food, green waste, everything. They can't eliminate trash. I don't even know where they, they get, they get that thinking from. So you can just mark that off. Increasing, I pay $300 a year, why do I need to pay 450? That's almost $1,000. A lot of them's already said, "We're on fixed incomes. We can't afford that." That's almost $1,000 more. We're struggling as it is. And talking about the gas, I understand, diesel, gas, I know the pricing. Well, yeah, I don't want to go into that. And that's not our problem. And as far as trash, I thought most everything was organic. Isn't that supposed to be faster decomposing? But yet you're wanting a special equipment to make a compost? That's not on us, that's on you. Pay it out of your pocket, not mine. It's, it just, it just can't go. I had a supervisor several years ago come to my home because your Waste Management driver saw that the neighbor across the street had an extra waste, green waste can.
Joe, yell at me.
Okay, talk to you, I'm talking to them because that's who I'm upset with. Anyhow.
They, they get the drift.
Okay, that's okay, they hear me. Came to my house to pick up trash. I have a wood business, I sell wood. And my neighbor happened to have an extra green waste can. Well, I didn't know, I asked the neighbor, "Can I put an extra can at your address?" Sure, go ahead. The Waste Management man calls up and says, "I need to know how many trash cans does this man have?" Well, he found out he only had one. He wouldn't pick it up. So the supervisor had to come to my house, and his quote is, "Green waste, that's our best selling. We take that, mulch it down, make it into mulch, and sell it. That is our biggest profit-making." And yet, they had to complain. Well, my neighbor called Waste Management and got two cans added. So if I have an extra can, I put it over there. Dumping, we talked about the dumping.
Joe, we do need to wrap it up.
I'm hurrying, as fast as I can. We need more free dumping at the, at the Waste Management. They've raised their prices so hard, we get two free dumps a year. Come on, people. We wouldn't have this dumping all over the place if we had free dumping. It shouldn't be, we already paying 300, 450 a year, a month, you know, a year anyway. Just knock it off. The homeless put out more trash than most residents. And it's not us that's dumping. We're paying, so we're using it. It's not us. Single-dwelling homes are not the ones that is dumping the trash, it's others. And I think that wraps it up. That is it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
David Aber. Long time, David.
Long time, sir. Good evening, everybody, staff, Ken, Marvin. Boy, it's good to see all you citizens here tonight. I've been doing this for 25 years. Where were you guys when the lighting tax was an issue, and I was the only one here coming forward? It was a lot less, but I was gonna speak for the whole time, but I really take my hat off to both of you guys. Letting, I mean, you know I'd never get one second over three minutes, and you guys, I'm surprised you didn't cut it back to one, but all these people, I could be wrong, the city attorney probably knows the answer, but if you guys don't pay for your trash pickup anymore, they still have to pick it up because they have a deal with the city. So you kind of have an avenue that you can go at, because I can remember back in the early 2000s when I had a problem with Waste Management, and they didn't want to treat me with respect. They still had to pick up my trash every week because all they could do was put a lien against your house. So you guys have another way to go about it besides, oh, excuse me, I don't want to be doing that. Besides a lawsuit, maybe everybody can figure out a resolution. And I'm willing to volunteer to head something like that, because I'm proud of my citizens. I wasn't, I had better things to do today, but I turned it on, and you guys were still here, and it looked pretty good. So I'll leave my last bit of time, I hope everybody had a safe and sound fourth of July. Don't pay for your trash pickup anymore, they still have to pick it up, so you guys do have a way to stand up for yourself right here and now. And if you haven't paid for it in three years, well then, don't worry about what you're given at the end, I think it'll all add up pretty good for you, but whatever it costs. I know that when the dust settled, they just wiped mine out. But my hat's off to you gentlemen, because I've never seen you guys allow people to go over for as long as they have, and some of the people got a good idea, so.
We agree with you guys.
Huh?
We agree with you.
I-
There's not much that we can do.
How can you not agree? I've been telling you guys, here, how long have I been here? Here, I forgot more about the law than most of the people in this room, and we all know that. Okay? If he was here, I could take him apart, but there you go, because we all know my history. He ran that day in the gym, and we'll leave it at that, that's a good way to end. God bless everybody.
I'm willing to volunteer to a committee to get to the bottom of this. Thank you, David. Leslie Schuman. Welcome.
Not the most eloquent, eloquent speaker, but I am gonna speak from the heart. I'm totally against having this put on my property taxes. I'm single, I live alone, soon to be retired, and on a fixed income. And I certainly don't need this. My, I'm one who my property taxes are about $1,385, and to add another 450, that's a pretty good percentage of increase for me. And not only that, I have a copy of my trash bill here. I have been home composting since the 90s. In fact, I think I got my home composter from this building back in the 90s. I still have it, it works fine. I put my yard clippings, all my house, all my food scraps out there, I make beautiful compost. I don't need this. And I'm sure a lot of other people could do the same thing. And just for the record, people who don't put out a lot of trash, I don't, I don't even put my cans out every week, maybe twice a month. You can get a smaller can if you need to at a lower price, I found that out today from a coworker. And is it the law that you have to have trash service as a homeowner?
Yes, it's a requirement.
It's a requirement, okay. Well, I just, I just don't think this is right. Homeowners are not the only people who put out trash, number one. And people who have, have rental properties, I guess if they have to have trash service, they have to, but I just don't think this should be put on the homeowners as a tax bill. It just isn't right. And they spend all this money on these new trucks with, that have the cameras, so they can tell. I go to the trouble to divide my trash up into the two cans, and so they can tell if I'm not doing things properly. So what are they doing about the people who have apartments, that own apartments and dumpsters?
That's a whole different-
Is everything going into the one big bin? Why are homeowners, we're doing, we're having to separate our stuff.
They're gonna have to separate it.
I work at the prison, they're dumping it all into bins, one big bin. You know, homeowner, homeowners, we're just getting scrutinized for everything. And, and like one of the gentlemen said, we have these people that come down the street and digging through our cans and pulling stuff out, and then the way they want us to divide stuff into the cans, they don't want us to put things into bags. Do you know what the street looks like on a windy day after they've come and picked up the trash? There's stuff everywhere, blowing around on the street, more trash. And they wonder why the deserts are full of trash. It's just really ridiculous what's going on. And the homeless people in the, in the deserts. My street is a dead end right by a desert, and I called the sheriffs one time because I was some new, the, the hotel tent people. They were creating some issues. There was some theft on my, right on my front doorstep one morning when I went outside to feed the cat. I called the sheriff, and they said they've decriminalized homeless people. So what's that about? I guess it's okay for them to just build their, their tents and throw stuff all over the place, and then when they leave, they leave, they leave a, leave a big old mess. And it just sits there.
The sheriff actually didn't decriminalize it.
I called the sheriffs, and they told me-
The district attorney's office did.
They told me it was decriminalizing, there was nothing they could do about those people in the desert.
From the district attorney's office. So it's Gaston. So it's not-
But, but there was no recourse, they were not gonna go do anything to those people.
Okay.
So I had no recourse, but to sit there and live with it. And I woke up one morning to go feed my cat, and there was a guy on my front porch at 5:30 stealing the blanket that was on my cat's house. If you can believe that, I'm serious. So I, I just think that, I just think that there's other things they could be doing besides taxing homeowners like this.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. You can move on. Scott Sutherland.
Hello, everyone, and first of all, I'll hire this guy as a consultant. He'll solve the problem and make the city money, and we won't have to have the issue, right? Yeah. He can put a satellite in orbit, he could fix a trash problem. Here's my issue. Can we trust you? That's my question that I'm having to deal with. It's not just you, it's can we trust the people that serve the sovereigns of this country, us? Or do they want to take away our sovereignty? That's the question that I'm facing right now. And I put my trust in God, and I know he's gonna make a way. Now, I appreciate the prayer at the beginning, that was awesome, but you forgot to pray for the people that are in authority, that's us. So the next time you pray, would you please add the sovereigns to the prayer, as well as the servants, please? I'd appreciate that.
We can make a recommendation.
Then do that. Okay.
We just go to the Supreme Court, I'll give you time.
No, no.
The Supreme Court told us exactly how we have to do it, so.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't mean we have to comply, because that would cause a lawsuit, and that might be a good thing. Here's where we're at. We couldn't trust the British, so we established our own independence. And as a country and as a city, as a school board, we have to decide when the time comes for we the people to say that we're not gonna take it anymore. And my question is, can I trust the members of this body? Or do we have to get people in that I can trust? That goes for Wilk, goes for Mike Garcia. If the people of this city stand up, what are you gonna do for us? Are you gonna call in the people against us? Or are you gonna stand with us? I'm gonna close with the story of Sodom and Gomorrah. Abraham was negotiating with God to save the city of Sodom, and he got God all the way down to ten righteous men. And the Lord, I believe it was Jesus, went down to Sodom with the two men. They went in the house, and Lot went out on the porch and said, "Do not do this wicked thing, go home." I believe if ten righteous household leaders had stepped up onto that porch beside Lot and said, "We're standing with him," and said, "We're standing with him," then the wickedness would have gone away and the city would have been saved. We're at our point, it's Sodom and Gomorrah. We have to decide, are we going to allow the wickedness to take us or are we going to stand up and trust God and push back? That's my question.
Welcome, Becky. Thank you. That's my husband with a PhD. He's more eloquent than I am, so I'm just the emotional one. I'm the one actually who reads the mail and this is why I got one of these. Because most of the people, if they did get one, threw it away because it was sent during election time. So they thought it was a flyer. I went door to door campaigning for one of our congressmen and they said, "We thought it was the poppy festival because it was a poppy on the top." And I go, "No, did you read what they're going to do? You're not going to get a waste man?" So I echo Eloise and I thank you for her because she said she knocked on 200 doors or talked to 200 people while I'm doing the electioneering and campaigning for my favorite congressman. People did not have this. So we personally made copies and let them know. So my question again, you had said 39,000, but we have 45,000 homeowners, is that right? 39,000 flyers went out, but there were 45,000 homeowners? So the 5,000 of them didn't get it and then she said she went a whole block. Well, I've been neighborhood block captain and Leslie's my neighbor across the street because I care about the seniors in my neighborhood. Most of them have passed away. In fact, one lady just died, found dead two days in our street. So I am, I am a community activist if you are concerned about people because that's, that's who God cares about, people and families, and I want my neighbors to be safe. So I went on knocking on all my doors in my neighborhood, giving them a copy of this, that I made a copy, giving them a copy of a possible protest letter so that they can be aware of, of this proposed ordinance. So my question, and everyone here has been so eloquent and, and so informative, the 39,000, I thank you all for being here. I thank God that, that there's been a response of this nature. My question, my first question again is the, the person who goes through the mail is, wait a minute, I called City Clark because it said this proposed fee increase was effective July 1st, but we can only say, no, I don't want it on July 12th. And I said, is that a typo? Should it have been June? Because otherwise we don't even have time. It's like you pass the bill before you can read it, do you know? And it's the same thing like Pelosi does. I go, what the heck is this? So I called this number, please call and email T. Lang, I called him, and he says, "Oh, no, and this might be information for the audience, is that, oh, no, we're, it's already going to be effective July 1st and then they'll reimburse you the money." And I go, when does the government ever reimburse you money? Do you know, so for stimulus? So that was kind of fishy to me. So I immediately, in my civic duty, because I care about people, made copies, alerted my neighborhood, all my friends at church, whatever, and that was really quizzical. Now that you pushed it to the 26th, which is my birthday, I'm not even going to be here, so I'm thank you for taking the time. I'll be in DC flying back home. So I thank you for taking that. The postcard, like I said, was sent, but it looked like election material. So again, I thought that was kind of fishy. And the third thing I wanted to share was, we all get the Lancaster Outlook and the, and again, I'm the nerd that goes through all the mail, the junk mail and I throw it, you know, for fire, you know, when it was in, you know, in the winter. And this one says, "A new state bill impacting our city." Now, I'm not sure, I guess, is, are you guys, City of Lancaster responsible for sending this out, right? The postcard? Are they also responsible for Lancaster Outlook?
Correct.
Okay. So here is the notification regarding a new state bill impacting our city explaining SB 1383. But on this, on this page, I tore it out to show you, there's no indicator that it says you won't have a trash bill, you're going to have a, you know, addition to your property taxes. It's not even on here. It just says, it says, "While my waste management bill go up, the state now requires that all organic materials be sent to a compost facility, this more costly process will affect your waste management bill. The City of Lancaster has negotiated these services at the lowest possible cost for our residents. You will see these changes reflected in your third quarter billing." And my question is, is that from the waste management? I don't, I don't know who's billing me for the third quarter.
Yes.
But it just said, "This is effective if we don't have," again, at the bottom it says, again, I read the small print and I'm not a lawyer, "If written protests against election fees for solid waste collection and single family dwellings collected on the tax roll are presented by a majority of owners or tenants prior to the close of the public hearing, collection of the tax roll will be rejected." How is it that, so who's getting it? They were already put this in place as of July 1st on the property tax. How is it we're being billed on the third? I'm confused, is who's billing?
We're talking two different things.
Okay.
We're talking, one is the rate itself.
Can you hear me?
One is the rate itself. The other one that they're talking about is the 218, which allows it to go on the property tax. So in July, the council increased the rate, okay? And it was negotiated and that's the rate. Okay? The 218 decides whether or not it goes on the tax bill.
Okay. Okay, so, so I want to address that second part, so that's good.
Becky, we need to.
Okay. The last one I just want to say, my mom, you know, because of the state of California, she's elderly, 94, I'm a senior, even though some people might say, look, but she has been throwing her trash, you know, as an elderly person into the, into her waste bin and she opened it and maggots flew in her face, you know, without a plastic bag. For the elderly, for any of us, and she's again, one person, she doesn't have a lot of consumable trash, kitchen scraps, yes. It was horrible and she has to, you know, so I don't even know the practicality of this organic thing. But, but I do know, I did ask her, I said, I asked her in Monterey County, is, are your property taxes up or is it just a waste management? And she said, "A waste management." So I just urge you guys, don't do this to our city. And, and I adamantly protest against adding it to the tax, our property taxes. Thank you.
Welcome, Darlene.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the time to talk and to speak. I originally came out here in the 90s, brought my family, my mother, I have raised my children and I commuted every day down below. I have served my country proudly for over 20 years. I encouraged my coworkers to come out to the Antelope Valley, Pacific League Lancaster, purchase homes and tell them the drive's not that bad, but the quality of life and the things that they're doing is great. And they did. And I still have coworkers that are new, that are still asking questions and wanting to know if they should really come out here, is it worth it? Well, now I feel like maybe it's not because I have people on my street and in my neighborhood, as everyone else said, that did not get that card. I got that card, I communicated with my neighbors, we look out for each other, we talk and I told them, this is going to be a problem. You're having people who were already saying they're coming and you're having people that have been here for years, like me and my family, that are saying, maybe it's time to sell our homes and move to another state because our money is not going to go as far as we want it to. And I am in early retirement right now, just retired and got the notice a week after. I'm like, well, if I'd have known that, maybe I'd have kept doing what I was doing because this is adding into our taxes. This is, plus, we're still getting a bill. So we're getting hit twice. And kind of, because if you think about it, they don't get out to pick up the trash, they don't make sure that it's not flying all over our neighborhood, they're not worried about us as a whole, they're worried about their bottom line. And you're taking away from all of us who decided that this was the best place to be. And I appreciate you gentlemen for being here, but the rest of them, that's not a good look. They left y'all holding the bag. And you say that you're not here to represent the state. Well, who's here to represent them? Because we need to talk to the people that we hired and keep voting for and letting them know, just because they have another where, where to live, that it's not good to do us wrong. We're the ones who are standing up and saying, hey, we're paying our bills, we're doing our taxes and you're adding more to it. So as we go into fixed incomes, we're, you're stretching our dollar to the point where, what's going to happen? We're going to have to start going to food banks or what are we going to have to do? My mother cannot afford this. I cannot afford this. And I'm not going to keep telling people that this is the greatest place to be because they care about us and that we're not going to have to go through this. I mean, Los Angeles is not going through this as bad as we are. And their, their housing prices is beyond me. I have friends, I have community. I said, hey, I may have to go get another job just to pay all this at the end of the year because it's not fair for someone to just make that decision for us. And I understand, you said, you know, okay, well, Newsome and Gaston, them, they need to go. But anybody else that is not going to fight for us also needs to go. Because in all honesty, I'd rather pay for the police, the cleanup of the homeless or whatever, even our roads. And I know, because my road is raggedy, but I'm not up here to complain about that. The city hasn't done anything about our sidewalks on our block, but we're not complaining about that. What we'd rather do and see the money go towards is stuff like that and not an annuity of waste management. They do have the monopoly and we're allowing them to push that bill over on us. And if our state senators and everybody are not going to show up and don't want to hear what we have to say, then maybe we need to vote them out and get people who will listen to the people because we're the reason why everybody has this spot and it's not fair to us. And for the young ladies to sit there and y'all say, well, just direct it to y'all, well, they, you called them up here. They were incognito back there and they didn't, they, they, they only, only responded because of you gentlemen. And I respect the fact that y'all even told them, come up here. But now they need to answer some of these questions, they need to hear what we have to say and y'all need to take this back to the people that we don't want this. And I am opposed to it and I am voting no. Thank you for your time and your input.
Is that Justo or? Is it Justo Belk?
Yes, I might skip the talking because someone asked if we're done and I'd like to give my minutes to somebody else.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
City Attorney. McKinley Kemp. Kate. Fran. Do you want to speak on this?
No, not right now.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Can I have your name, please?
Yes. My name's Richard Grunberg. I got the car like everybody else that was playing almost due to a, then I got the increase on the trash from waste management for 3.5%. And then every year, every utility is going up 2% to 4%. I know we're here to talk about trash, but I was hoping that you guys would help us with every utility and, and stand up for these increases, not only for trash, but every utility. Because it comes out of, it altogether comes out of our pocket. Every utility and trash adds up. That's why we're here today. You know, we want to lower, you know, we want to lower everything lowered. I also got suggestions for waste management. They do get their flyer out, but down at the bottom, it does say 62 in small, fine print. So maybe they can increase the print, put a phone number like people suggested. Electronic tags, I know we get two per year, but we used to give them as paper in a, in a brochure. You know, they're saying it's a tag and you take the tag with you, but now it's all electronic. Maybe we could put paperback in or saying electronic tag one, electronic tag two, it's just a suggestion for waste management because people tend to take that flyer and throw it away. But if they see the paper in there saying this is electronic tag, they'll know they have two free trash days to pick it up, you know, your trash, you know, whether couches, tires or whatever. And then my, my one question to do is, what are you doing with this compost that they supposed to, are they going to sell it outright or are they going to turn it back to the city?
They're hauling it to Bakersfield.
Yeah, are they going to turn it back to the city and let us get free compost at the, at the, at the city yard?
It won't belong to us anymore, it goes to Bakersfield.
So they're going to sell it for profit?
I don't think they sell it for profit, they pay to haul it there.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up. Okay, everyone understand that we're breaking a lot of rules today, so.
We're going to tell.
Okay.
My name is Mitch Miller. I've lived in this valley since 56. I ran a business here in Lancaster for over 20 years and I understand things cost more money and you had to adjust. But unlike waste management, I had competition. When I had to adjust, I had to adjust to that fact. We don't have competition with waste management. I remember very vividly when the waste management became the monopoly here in Lancaster. I had negotiated with another company for my waste to be taken away. My bill went up substantially. It hasn't gone down since. Now, I am retired. Very, very little do I get as far as cost of living. Social Security doesn't recognize cost of living very well. And I think most of us know that. I can't just vote myself a raise. Doesn't happen.
The governor banned it?
Yeah, our governor, yeah. You know, we're talking about the governor mandated that this happened, the assembly mandated that this happened. I'm seeing, I'm sorry, but a lot of buck passing. I commend you two for being here. The only two of our frickin' city council that could show up. Our governor, within the first few days of him being in office, took what the, the citizens of this California had voted in and said, well, I don't agree with this law. We're not going to have the death sentence anymore. You know, the city, the people of California had voted that in. The people put it on the ballot and voted it in and our governor decided all by himself that, nah, we're not going to do that anymore. But you folks are standing here saying, well, we can't change anything. Our governor says, you know what? The federal government says you can't come here illegally. But our governor says, no, I'm not going to apply by that law. He just makes up the rules as he goes, so does our assembly and so does our mayor down in LA. Are we going to do the same thing? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Curtis Clifton. I've lived here since 55. I have an unusual type of situation. I've retired. I don't live here permanently. I'm here maybe four, five months out of the year. I have homes in other two states. So I made arrangements in 2019 with city council or city management and the manager of waste management, that when I'm out of state, I turn the service off. I have to be gone longer than 30 days to do that. They don't pick up the barrels, they don't bring me back barrels. They don't pick up the barrels, they don't bring me back barrels. When I come back, I call them back. They reinstate the service without a reinstate fee. And this has been going on since, like I said, 2019. I talked to Travis Lane. He said there is no such procedure in the contract to do that. So I don't understand what happened, but somewhere along the line, it got lost. I don't feel that I should have to pay when I'm not in state, when I'm not using the service. And I definitely vote no on both procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
Mr. Chris, I found one little tidbit. Very simple. Top 10 most prolific E-Verify violators. Right on Google, has the list. Waste Management is number three. Number three of the most prolific violators of the E-Verify. That's why you can't communicate with none of them when they dump the trash in the street.
Anyone else like to speak?
I have one quick question, just clarification about, like, we handed in our opposition notices.
Uh-huh.
And so, because...
Come on up to the podium so I can hear you.
This council is, I don't think you guys were here when I had a previous issue, where a quorum didn't show up, and they wanted everyone to come back. Because that's kind of the trick, right? Don't show up, so you miss the big crowd, and about half these people might show up again on the 26th, which is so unfair. It's summer. It's 100-something degrees outside. People are busy. So for them to not show up, for this quorum not to be in place, and for our, this was supposed to be settled at this meeting tonight by the opposition or the positive in the room. And you, this has been taken from us by their absence, their dereliction of duty. They had, what, better things to do? Right? This is unfair to us, because now you're putting it on us to reassemble the same amount of people. So I guess my question is, where do our protests go? How do those get counted? Do we bring back new protests for the next meeting? Like, how do we do this? Because it's clear, the majority in this room is opposed to this increase. I understand the increase. I am vehemently opposed to going on my tax bill. So how do we get, what do we do? We were here, and I believe the majority have spoken in the negative against this. So that should be the end of the matter. We did our part. We did exactly what you told us to do. The fact that these three people decided not to show up, how convenient. Now you put the burden back on us. You already put it on us with a plain deceptive card and tiny little print, and we overcame that. We showed up. And now what happens to our negative votes? We got to repeat this whole process?
No.
Okay.
The short answer is no. If you've submitted your written protest...
Yes, I did.
It's held by the city clerk and will be counted together with any additional protests that come in between now and the close of the public hearing, which will occur on July 26th.
But out of how many people? It was supposed to be about the people that showed up at the meeting. So how do you tell who showed up at the meeting?
Okay, so the majority protest is of the folks eligible to protest, not of the people who attend. So the people who attend come and speak.
That's not how it reads here. This reads, if people show up and vote in the negative, by the end of this meeting, you will not be put, they will not be put on the tax roll.
By the end of the public hearing. And the public hearing has been continued to July 26th at 5:00 PM.
So out of the majority of the people that were here in this room?
No, the majority of the people eligible to protest.
Who is that?
The people who received the notices. The 39,000.
So the majority of 39,000 people?
Yes.
Are you out of your minds? Have to show up in this room?
They do not have to show up. They have to submit a protest.
This is nonsense. You should at least have the decency to put this on the ballot in November. I'm sorry, but this is outrageous. That's an outrageous statement. And you should at least, please, have the decency to put this on the ballot in November and let the majority of the people of the City of Lancaster make their voices heard. That's the least you should do in the absence of these three people, who I want to call cowards, but I won't officially. I thank you, gentlemen, for being here and taking the brunt of this. You obviously are serious about your jobs. These folks are less so. But come on, have the decency to put this on the ballot in November? 39,000 people? Are you out of your minds? That's outrageous. That is nonsense. That is as stupid as this tiny little print on the bottom of this card. Come on, you got to work with us. You got to put this on the ballot. Come on, give us the city, the whole city, a chance to vote on this.
We'll address everything at the next meeting. I can't make any decisions here.
I understand.
And so, we heard you, came up with a lot of good suggestions, a lot of good ideas. You know, we need to sharpen our pencils and take a look at it. So I hope you all attend on the 26th. And trust me, I don't want to go through it again, but I'm glad to if...
Neither do we.
If we need, I know.
We got stuff to do. You know how hard it is to get people motivated to come down here, especially at 5 o'clock? So one thing Rex did give us is the very early town council meeting times, which used to be, I believe, 7 o'clock back in the day. That is unfair to people. They can't even get off the freeway by 5:00 on a Tuesday. Come on. Come on, give us something. I know you can't do it tonight.
I can't do anything tonight.
Some of us will make it back.
Other than heal your pain.
And we'll see. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.